Call the regular meeting of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners for tonight, April 20th, 2016 to order. Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Twelve present, zero absent.
All right, you have a full house. Commissioner Henderson, can you lead us in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community at Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Now would be the time for members of the public to provide comment on items that are on tonight's agenda. If you're here to provide public comment on an agenda item tonight, please state what the agenda item is and your name and address. No public comment?
There is some public comment.
Good evening. I never remember the rules for this. So I'm Cassie Wick. I reside at 820 West Mercury. I wrote a letter to all of you yesterday, and I'm glad to be here. I've ridden my bike to my office for the last two days, and I take Mercury Street to Main Street, and then I ride that street home. And although the bike lane is faded, it's still there. And so what I noticed is on the way down, I can go like 27 miles an hour, so no one's passing me. But on my way home, I'm riding five to seven miles an hour. And what I noticed about the drivers is they don't know what to do with bikes because they've never been given the opportunity to be around bikes. So as I go, as I climb up the hill, I'm going slower. Today, I was passed by three cars. It takes me probably 10 minutes from Front Street to get up to Mercury Street where I cross back over. Probably 10 minutes, three cars passed me. So over the course of these last two days, I've just been observing, this is not even bike season yet. And so what I knew was that as I was headed down, people didn't know what to do with the shero. They followed me a little bit. They kind of stayed next to me. Only one car, though, because it's not busy, only one car, and she kind of didn't know what to do. But we were also getting to that point down by Front Street where she wanted to turn right and I was going to go straight. And I just recognized that the bike lane is beneficial because it shows people that somebody is there. And regardless of who it is and how many times they're going to ride it, I feel safer having it. My route is, the most dangerous part now is crossing under the interstate over at Harrison Avenue, which is terrifying. But other than that, that is a safe and efficient route for me to get to work, and it provides me the right to do that. So I would really appreciate if you consider this. It's just a quality of life issue. And I also work with people with disabilities, and I don't, if we don't create access for people through the sidewalks, then they're safer in a bike lane, having some identified space to head up the street. Are you seeing that all the time either? No. But if somebody needs to do it, it makes people aware that somebody might be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie. Other public comment?
Hi, everybody. Gina Evans, 2750 Cassouth. As you guys know, years ago, a couple years ago, I brought Safe Rafts to school here to Butte. Over $180,000 came into our community from those grants, and we tried to support awareness, getting kids out on bikes, families out on bikes, bringing people into Butte, the recreation, tourism. Also, people look at it as an economic value, livability value. You have schools with bike lanes. Bike lanes bring people out to our recreation. So I'll lead into the Butte 100. People come visit for the Butte 100. They see that we're a recreation city. We're able to transport. People buy bike, and the livability scale goes up. And with bike lanes, there's more, we're not aliens out there. You get people more out on bikes. You're going to be able to support those that are able to cycle, walk, and make an awareness campaign. And another new venture I'm in, I will be a manager, founder of a mountain bike rental and shuttle company then to May, and we'll be able to increase the tourism there. We're going to be bringing people in from all over the United States and the world. So we might as well show that we can have a bike and have a safe route to get to places, and especially Uptown Butte. Thank you.
I'm Todd Hunkler. I live at 826 West Silver Street, and I'm also speaking as a proponent of the bike lanes. I think that over the past two years, we've worked really hard as a community to be able to get these bike lanes in Uptown Butte. And if you remember right, there was a commission meeting where this was the sole topic, and we had so many bikers in here commenting as proponents of the bike lanes that we were asked to stop after an hour and a half of folks saying that they wanted bike lanes in the community. You know, I think there are a lot of people that want to see these. I think it's a quality of life issue here in Butte. And I think it's important that we move forward in the way that we have. Last week, I heard Dave Schultz talk about what's going to happen with the lanes on Main Street. While I agree with, can agree with some of the sentiment that Commissioner Palmer has about the bike lanes on Main Street, I think that when you look at communities that have a strong biking contingent and have really quality bike transportation systems, it wasn't a immediately install a bike lane and everything worked right. We've got it, we've got to implement these bike lanes that we've got. The lanes specifically on Main Street have not even gone through a full biking season yet. We haven't got to see what the traffic patterns have done. We haven't got to see what it does with the safety of bikers. And I think we need to, we need to continue with what we've got and repaint those lanes in the way that we have them. And if they do need to be changed, I think, one, we need to have community input on that and have further input from the commissioners. I don't think that this is a one-size-fits-all scenario, and I think it's something that we as a community can continue to work on and improve on to get something that's going to be right for everyone. Thank you.
My name's Patrick Stoy. I reside at 826 West Silver. I'm also here as a proponent of the bike lanes. Just to kind of reiterate a lot what they've said, we've had these in for six months, and it's been the winter. And while I ride my bike in the winter, not everyone rides their bike in the winter. And this winter was especially bad. There was a lot of snow on the streets, so you couldn't really ride your bike. And so we haven't seen people using them. Because especially in the winter, it's a lot of cars sliding around. And so even though I could use the bike lanes, a lot of times, I'm going to be using side streets because cars are sliding a lot of the time. So in the winter, we're going to use side streets. But in the summers, those bike lanes are great for getting people from uptown to downtown, from downtown to uptown. Especially Main Street is a great way to get there. So I'm a huge proponent of that.
My name is Benjamin Carr. I live at 821 West Silver. And I like to ride my bike to work, but that's not really why I'm here. So southwest Montana is the suicide capital of Montana, and Montana is the suicide capital of the nation. And part of that speaks to a lack of wellness. You know, we have substance abuse, we have other issues going on here, but a lot of those we can address. But a general wellness push, getting people to exercise, getting people to get fresh air, is a certain and effective way to address depression, which is correlated with suicide. So if nothing else, we have these little bikes all over the road that kind of act as a public health initiative to say, hey, listen, your health is important, and your health correlates to society's well-being. So I think this is more of a health issue than I do anything else. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
I'm dancing back there.
My name is John Wick. I live at 820 West Mercury. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I am a proponent of the bike lanes. I've used them all many times. I've climbed up Main Street, and it's totally doable. And the one thing that I just wanted to add that people having it is that added room of the actual bike lane versus a shero with the speed difference between yourself and the car right next to you really makes me personally feel safe when I'm heading uptown. Going downtown, like Cassie said, you're riding with traffic, so that's not that big of an issue. But for me, it's a safety thing. And if you take that away, you're literally making my life and my bike rides less safe. So, thank you.
Terrence Bath, 431 West Mercury. I use those bike lanes, oh, probably once every two, three weeks to run down to Triple S by paintbrush. I connect down to Blacktail Creek Loop to go to the airport. My normal haunt is out on the Silver Bow, going up Silver Bow on either the Butte Anacon Pacific Copperway. I ride those probably two, three times a week. It's very clever, and John's already touched on, I'm sure others have too, how that was arranged with the downhill sheros and the uphill bike lane. I may be the oldest one among our group here, and I've ridden bikes pretty actively for over half a century, four continents. And I think I'm a pretty good judge of how to keep alive on a bike. I've been hit a couple times, but not seriously injured. So the people that think that that's unsafe, I challenge them to come ride with me, and we'll discuss it. Main Street is very lightly traveled. It's a good configuration. I'd like to encourage the council to drive forward on this. We've got the Butte 100 coming up. It's such a great thing for this city, what Gina and Dr. Shreeney did. I'd like to see the lanes painted prior to those people coming into town. That just shows that we're a really vibrant and forward-looking city with the bike lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Hi, I'm Jenny Haglund. I live at 383 Whisper Ridge. I'm in Commissioner Henderson's district. I, too, want to reiterate what John and Terry just said, that the bike lanes are a safety issue. As a new mom, I'm really concerned about having bike lanes so my child can ride his bike to school one day. I think leaving the bike lane on Main Street is also very important to the youth in this community, so they have the option to ride their bikes safely to school, or there's something there to encourage them to have a healthy other form of transportation besides just driving. Also, I am employed at Montana Orthopedics and would regularly ride my bike up Montana Street prior to the bike lanes being implemented, and that was honestly terrifying. So with the implementation of the new bike lanes, I started taking Main Street, and it is so much smoother, so much safer. And I can tell you in the mornings, the traffic is nice and low. In the evenings, going home, I have no problem going downhill with traffic as well. The other thing I'd like to point out, too, that I hope the commissioners will note, is that we don't have to have an avid biking community, which we do have, in order to have safe, healthy transportation for everyone. But I think there is a much larger avid biking population than people know about. We host the hardest 100-mile bike race, mountain bike race, in the United States. We have local residents who've competed in the Tour de France. And if you've ever been out to Modesto, particularly this week, in the last two days, there's been 30-plus bikers out every day of all ages, not just young adults like myself, but young kids, too. So I would encourage the council to keep the bike lanes and help make our cities safer and healthier for our youth. Thank you.
Commissioners Chief Executive, Todd Horr, 1915, South Idaho. I agree with what Jenny said. I used to try to ride my bike up Montana Street. It's pretty scary. Instituted the bike lane on Main Street. It's perfectly safe. You feel safe. I think the cars feel safe. They don't have to swerve around you. You're in your lane, they're in their lane. The main thing I wanted to bring up is with the institution of the paths and the bike lanes, we, with our Buttover Fest funds, have invested over $8,000 in accessible bikes to promote biking as a way of life for people with disabilities. So we're moving forward. I'd hate to see us turn around and start moving backwards. There's, you know, if we're going to keep two lanes on Main Street, then we should keep a designated bike lane going up, sheroes going down. Works perfectly. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Cass, and I live at, excuse me, 809 South Main. And I am not a biker, apparently, obviously. But living on Main Street, I have been there for eight years, and when they implemented the bike lanes last year, I was not real thrilled with it. Since then, I've changed my mind, and not recently, but watching traffic patterns on Main Street for the last few months. Traffic has slowed considerably. We have had three cars totaled in front of my house, parked there. There have been much fewer accidents. I think I've seen one in the last eight months on Main Street in my area. I also have grandchildren. That Main Street can be dangerous for the kids. And with the implementation of the bike lanes and the slower traffic, it's safer for my grandchildren if they happen to get out of the yard. And I also would like to see them utilize the bike lanes as they get older. I would like to see Butte High encourage kids to use the bike lanes as well. So I do ask that you really think this through before taking the bike lanes away. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Sanford. And as you can see, I'm in the older generation. I don't really ride my bike a whole bunch, but I came out to support the bike lanes. I really like them. I think that, you know, not to reiterate what everybody said, but I think it really makes things a lot safer and promotes Butte as more of a healthful community. And I'd sure like to keep the bike lanes where they are, reestablish them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dark Sevier. I live at 406 West Broadway. And I heard on the radio that we were coming back to this again. Did we do this last year? I just wanted to make sure I wasn't in like a Truman Show, Groundhog Day thing, because I know we weren't broadcasting these last year, but I turned on the radio and I had, I needed, I don't know if there's a shrink that I needed to see, but I came here just to see if this was real. And I heard everything tonight that I heard last year. And how did this, whose idea was this? Can I ask that? Whose idea was this to revisit this?
It's public comment.
Public comment. Okay, well, that's my public comment, is that I think it's a wonderful idea to have bike lanes. It's good for everybody. Smiley faces and kittens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sevier.
I'll follow him.
So I'm all about kittens and smiley faces. I run the wellness program for Northwestern Energy, Tabitha Ellsbury Hyatt, and I live on the flats. And I would ride up the bike lanes, except that they were instituted in October, before the winter, before a season of biking, and the bike lanes are already off of the streets. So I drive up and down every single day on Main Street, a minimum of twice a day. And of course, Northwestern is huge on safety, as well as wellness. So I would love to see a community that supports bike lanes, supports healthy transportation, alternative means, healthy anything. But it is a huge safety risk, as it is right now. There's no lines. I've gotten sideswiped almost five times. I've stopped people at stoplights to say, hey, remember, I'm so smiley, hey, because I don't want to get like beat up or shot or something. But I say, hey, remember, they instituted the bike lanes, and this is now a center turn lane that you're now driving down, because I'm going to get sideswiped, let alone the bikers, the walkers, the children, everyone trying to use the bike lanes. I'm just trying to drive safely. But I would also like to bike safely. So I would like more than six months for bike lanes to give a chance in this town that I moved to five years ago to run the wellness program for Northwestern, with a brand-new building uptown on Main Street. So give bike lanes a chance.
Thank you, Tabitha. Any other public comment?
My name is Ken Clark. I represent Action Automotive at 419 South Main Street. I'm not opposed to the bike lanes. I just want all the bicyclists to know that. I am opposed to the way they were painted last year. The stripes were painted. The fact that they've came off because they were painted when the roads were in a poor condition. I would like to see the painting be done better so that it actually looks more appeasing. And I would also like to see if they're going to, when they paint the arrows in the centers at the turn lanes, that they do them at the intersections. Right now, as it is, there's a turn lane that points directly into my building, which is, I have a door there for my customers, but it's not really designed for someone just to turn and pull into my building. You know, it would also save probably a lot of paint if they put going down a turn lane to make a left turn, coming up a turn lane to make a left turn, rather than two or three in the middle of each block. As they said, when they're going to go driving down, it's very unsafe driving conditions, the way they removed the old stripes. They had a, if you ever you've seen it, a guy on what looked like a little riding lawnmower with a grinder, grinding out the pavement to grind off the stripes. When it's wet, it looks like there's two lanes each direction, and people drive that way. I have followed at least a dozen times over the last six months, police officers driving down what's supposed to be the turn lane, all the way down Main Street. And I drive up and down Main Street 15 or 20 times a day, running out after parks and equipment and things. So I don't want the bicyclists to think that I'm opposed to them. I'm not. I ride a bicycle on the flats because I'm too lazy to ride uptown. But I would like to see the striping program done better. And I did hear someone say earlier that Mr. Schultz has a proposed striping, and I wasn't here last week to listen to that or hear about that. But that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any further public comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll move into the approval of the minutes from the April 6th regular meeting. Commissioner Shaw?
Welcome back, Chief Executive Vincent.
Thank you.
I would move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting occurring on April 6,
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We'll move into Chief Executive Report, and I'll go through a few items here. We got some busy, busy happenings going on in the uptown. If you see a lot of folks you don't recognize the next couple of days, we've got the Montana Economic Development Association, or MEA, as they're called. Their spring conference is being held here in Butte for the first time. And I haven't been able to find anyone yet who remembers the last time they had one of their conference meetings here. But needless to say, it's a good thing that they are the lead economic development agency for the state of Montana outside of the Governor's Office of Economic Development. They've chosen Butte and the new Northwestern Energy Building at the corner of Park and Main as the spot to host their spring conference meeting. You can still register at the door, I believe, beginning at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning. And it's going to be held through Friday. That is, again, at the new Northwestern Energy Building. And that, it features some great panel discussions and presenters, including the new, I believe he's, let me see what his title is here, but the new Regional Director for the Economic Development Agency at the federal level, Nathan Ollie. Oll or Ollie from Denver is going to be here as the keynote speaker tomorrow. Things got kicked off tonight with Pub Crawl, featuring some of our new microbreweries. So good stuff happening in Butte the next couple of days, which at the same time, we also have the district Rotary Conference being held out at Fairmont Hot Springs, and that's going to be getting kicked off on Friday. So if you want to go check out, there's going to be over 100 Rotarians here in Butte Silver Bow over Friday and Saturday. And so that's being hosted out at Fairmont Hot Springs. And if you haven't seen their new conference facilities, they made about a $4 million investment out there within the last year and a half. And it's one of the better conference facilities in the state now. So, and is being recognized as such, as there's more and more groups that are choosing Butte and the Fairmont areas, its location. And I don't know how many folks made it to the Northwestern Energy Board function last night, but they did the dedication of the new Butte General Office Building last night. We will be doing a public ribbon cutting on that building on Saturday, May 21st. And so we'll have plenty of time to provide more details on that. But obviously, I would say we can't celebrate that new structure enough. And so we're going to continue to do that, at least through the 21st of May. Also, I think of note is that with all the celebration on the new Northwestern Energy Building, we can't forget about the 40 East Broadway, former General Office Building there. The clock is counting down on when that building could come into public hands. And as a way to get ahead of the curve on that, we've got a marketing group. We've been going through it with our government buildings, manager Pat Holland and Dave Schultz and our Public Works Department, a variety of other staff, planning, economic development. From just a functional standpoint on what it would mean if we were to take over that building. And then we also have a group to be kicking around all sorts of ideas on how we can continue and expand the way we market that building to a potential buyer for its highest and best use so that it might not come into public hands. Because it is a 110,000 square foot building, which basically has roughly the same amount of square footage as the courthouse that we're in here. So it's a, it's a big building. That group includes Commissioners Shaw and Commissioners Palmer, as well as Pam Cody from the BLDC, Jim Gambich from Murdy, the Headwaters RC&amp;D Group that put together a Big Sky Trust grant to look at some architectural analyses of that building. We've met three times, done a tour of the building. It obviously involves staff from Northwestern Energy as well in determining all the details with that building. And we're going to continue to expand and market the building for finding the next owner of that building prior to it coming into Butte Silver Bow's hands, which at this point, that process is kind of, if you recall, there was a lot of details on how that would take place in the development agreement that came before this group a couple of years ago. And so that was set on track when we approved that development agreement. But timing would be sometime in the month of May if Butte Silver Bow were going to be taking that building over. So we'll continue to apprise this body of what the progress is on those endeavors. We have, I made a soft announcement of this a few weeks ago when we received notification that Butte was chosen as the Tree City of the Year for the State of Montana by the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. That has been firmed up, and I'm pleased to announce that Governor Bullock will be joining folks here with our extension, our local community development department, as well as our urban forestry board on Friday, May 6, 11:00 a.m. at Emma Park, to plant some trees and to bestow that prestigious award upon Butte. And that really just kind of speaks volumes to the quality of the work that we have and the volunteers from our urban forestry board, as well as our county extension agent. Butte won it this year, and we were a finalist last year where we actually shared the award with, I believe, Kalispell. And so, you know, I know Butte has reputations in some circles as being a city with not many trees. That's simply not true. We have been a tree city for 27 years running and have been the state's best tree city the last two years. and have been the, the state's best tree city the last two years. So spread that rumor around as we uh move forward. Uh, congratulations to all who, who helped us get there. So again, that would be Friday, May sixth, eleven at Emma Park. Would also uh, uh, give a quick update on our Superfund Advisory and Redevelopment Trust Authority Group that Commissioner Henderson serves you all on. We are in the midst of our opening year of uh grant applications. We received forty one applications that were, I mean, there was just, they, they, they were from A to Z and there was some really good uh applications in there. They uh, uh totaled over one and a half million dollars in requests and uh, the board uh approved uh roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the category that could cover the majority of those uh projects. A total budget of uh, of about five, five or six hundred thousand dollars is approved to cover all of the categories. So obviously, um, this uh, uh, group of uh Superfund Advisory and Redevelopment Trust Fund folks had a heck of a job in front of them and trying to pare that list down. They've made the first um cut, so to speak, of, of projects and that, that uh list of forty one has been narrowed down to twenty and the still totals uh, uh, over eight hundred thousand dollars. But the projects are, I mean, I think they're really good ones, I think, I see Danny nodding his head over there. I mean, there's a lot of good infrastructure projects, uh sidewalks, storm sewer projects, uh landscaping projects. There's also some cultural projects such as the um restoration of the old CO and Smithers uh hi- historical photograph collection, some interpretive signage projects for historic neighborhoods in Butte. Um, there's also a lot of historic building restoration projects that are in there too. And so um, those next, the next round of, of uh analysis on those applications will uh continue, they're continuing individually with the members at this point. But uh, the next meeting of the SARTA is this coming Tuesday, April twenty sixth at six o'clock. So um, the group will be making additional progress on, on those uh, uh, project evaluation. There will also be a presentation from, if you recall, we uh, Butte Silver Bow received a grant from the New Mobility West Group to look at uh, the West Park Street Project. Not just the, the transportation project or the, the uh, uh, roads and, and lineage and, and that sort of things, but everything outside the line, so to speak, to what residents, business owners, um, people that use that corridor would like to see in the, the end land uses. And uh, we worked with the uh, uh, public and private uh partners on that uh, 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 grant with, that, that was through New Mobility West included uh, the uh, well, I know the, the acronym, I can't remember what it stands for, but PUMA was uh, one of the consultants that worked on that project with our local group. John Levy from New Mobility West will be presenting the final report on that uh, uh, grant at the SARTA meeting on uh Tuesday, the twenty sixth, uh shortly after six o'clock when the, the meeting commences. So um, if you wanna see for the first time uh, what those, uh, what some of the top twenty projects that are up for consideration look like, or if you wanna see the final report that came out of the West Park Street uh New Mobility West Grant, that would be six o'clock at the Emergency Operations Center out on Wynne Avenue. Um, uh, six o'clock on, on Tuesday, the twenty sixth. And that concludes my chief executive report. So we'll move into uh, section one, bid openings, public hearings and presentations. We have one bid opening and two public hearings. So I will ask our county attorney if we have proper proof of publication for all three of those items, counselor.
Uh, Mr. Chief Executive, there is proof of publications for section one, two, and three, and all do appear to be in order.
All right, excellent, thank you very much. Communication number sixteen dash one forty-four, a bid opening. Nick Sanford, our road operations manager, requesting counsel. Authorized time this evening to conduct a bid opening regarding our invitation for bid for asphalt. Mr. Sanford.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, council commissioners. This uh bid opening is for asphalt oil and um subsequent uh emulsions and other oils that we use on a operations basis. Um, we had three bids this evening. Um, the first bid is from Calumet. Calumet Refinery from Black Eagle, Montana. Your bid bond.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is um, a bid bond in the amount of ten percent from a licensed surety company that does appear to be in order.
Okay.
Thank you, the uh, so they bid on a few different items. The first one was uh, grade PG fifty-eight twenty-eight asphalt oil with a point seven five percent anti-stripping agent. They bid four hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents with a total of five hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. The second item, so, so actually there was uh, that was the base bid and there were add alternate bids with the rest of the oils. Um, so for add alternate bids, the next one was CRS two cadionic emulsified asphalt or equivalent. Their bid was four hundred and thirteen dollars with three hundred tons at a total of a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. The next was a tack oil emulsion with uh, their bid was three hundred and eighty-three dollars a ton at a hundred tons, which is a total of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars. They did not bid on reclaimed asphalt pavement rejuvenator or crack seal emulsion. They also did not bid on the Durapatch oil, uh, the quick break polymer rejuvenating emulsion or the fog seal emulsion.
Nick, can you repeat the first one?
The first was a PG fifty-eight twenty-eight asphalt oil with point seven five percent anti-stripping agent. Their bid was four hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents per ton and at twelve hundred and fifty tons, the total was five hundred and ten thousand, six twenty-five. Thank you. The next bid is from Western Emulsions from Billings, Montana.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there's surety um through a cashier's check in the amount of ten percent that does appear to be in order.
All right, thank you.
So for the first base bid, they did not bid on the asphalt oil, the PG fifty-eight twenty-eight. The add alternate bids, they bid on the CRS two P cadionic emulsified asphalt or equivalent. They bid four hundred and sixty-five dollars per ton at three hundred tons, which equals one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. The next item was tack oil emulsion, they did provide a bid for that. They provided a bid of four hundred and fifty-five dollars per ton at one hundred tons with a total of forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. The next item they bid on was reclaimed asphalt pavement rejuvenator at one thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars per ton at two hundred tons with a total of twenty-two thousand, six hundred, sorry, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars even. They did not provide a bid for crack seal emulsion, Durapatch oil, but they did provide a bid for the polymer modified rejuvenating emulsion, quick break QB or equivalent at six hundred and sixty-five dollars per ton. The next was a fog seal emulsion and they bid on that for four hundred and forty-five dollars per ton. And that was it.
Commissioner Purdue Aldo.
Um, Nick, those last two bids, could you give us the totals on those last two bids that?
There was, there was actually no total, it was just a bid per ton. So there's no actual quantity, it wasn't actually based on a quantity, just a per ton bid.
Could you give us those again?
Sure.
Thank you.
So for the polymer modified rejuvenating emulsion, the PMRE, it was six hundred and sixty-five dollars per ton. And the fog seal emulsion was four hundred and forty-five dollars per ton.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. And then the next, one more, one last bid was from Normont, Montana, or Normont Equipment and they are out of Black Eagle, Montana. They provided a cashier's check.
Uh, Mr. Chief Executive, there is a um surety through a cashier's check in the amount of ten percent of their bid that does appear to be in order.
Okay, thank you.
So Normont Equipment did not bid on the uh, the, the base bid item, which was asphalt oil. They also did not bid on the first add alternate bid, which is cadionic emulsified asphalt. They also did not provide a bid for tack oil emulsion, but they did provide a bid for a tote of reclaimed asphalt pavement rejuvenator, Reclamite or equivalent. Per tote, they bid, provided a bid price of one thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. They provided a bid, a bid quote for crack seal emulsion PSC at per tote price, which was one thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars per tote.
What is a tote?
Basically a uh, a, a container about, I think it's about five hundred gallons, something.
Thank you.
They did provide a Durapatch oil quote at one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars per tote. And that was their last bid item they provided.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This time I move to uh refer the three bids back to the Public Works Department, awaiting their recommendation back to this body.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to refer back to Public Works. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Communication sixteen dash one four five, we have a public hearing. We're all good?
Yep.
Okay. JP Gallagher, Parks and Recreation Department, requesting counsel. authorize a public hearing to amend the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget in Parks and Recreation for the golf course fund, Mr. Gallagher.
Chief Executive Vincent, uh commissioners, I requested to amend the golf course fund because uh, we, we made some um, changes to the golf course this year. As you remember, I came to a presentation to you about an RFP to possibly uh, put the bid out for uh, for full management of the golf course. And if that failed, if we failed to have, you know, somebody really uh give us a competitive bid and that, that I would be coming back to you to talk to you about hiring a golf pro and uh, having to uh, ask for some money to stock a, a pro shop. I was able to, to work it out within my budget uh, this last year to hire a golf pro without having to ask you for that funding because of retirement within our uh, within Parks and Rec and, and working it out that way. But um, with adding a golf pro, and I'm going to introduce our golf pro here in a minute, um, we do have the need to stock a, a pro shop and, and be able to add that amenity to the, to the golf, um, to, to the golf course and to the players down there. Um, it, it's something that uh was lost, we lost a lot of players, we lost a lot of revenue over the last few years with uh, with the lack of having a golf pro and not being able to provide that service for our uh, for our golfer. So I'm asking today for the twenty thousand dollars uh, to stock the golf uh shop, which would be golf clubs, golf balls, um, it would be uh, you know, gear for, for the golfers and also uh, just to, to have a, a golf shop that people can, can spend their money in as they went in, in tournaments or in league play. So with that, I would like to introduce uh Mark Fisher. Mark Fisher, we hired, um, he has been uh with Fairmont and uh, uh, golf course out there for the last thirteen years, uh, running golf, golf operations. So we have hired him as golf pro slash uh, pro shop manager. So uh, with that, I'd, I'd like uh Mark to come up and he can give you a feel of the details of how things have already changed in the golf shop um for you, just a little quick information.
Thanks JP. Tiger Fisher.
Yes, I am Tiger Fisher. Again, thank you guys, Chief Executive, commissioners, I appreciate your time about this. Um, yeah, my name is Mark Fisher. Uh, I have been running golf, or as director of golf operations for Fairmont for thirteen years. And there's a difference between a golf pro and a director of golf operations. A golf operations, I take account of every aspect of golf operations from budgeting to food and beverage, to labor, to setting all of the, the goals and presentance and actuality of the day-to-day operations. The reason that I went with JP and asked him for the twenty thousand dollars is merchandise is absolutely a key to golf operations. It's like owning a restaurant and not having a salad bar. Or if I go to buy a steak, I want a side of fries and not having fries. So what we're trying to give the golfer is the, the entity to have the full package. And the full package is everything that is relied upon in the golf operations. And from golf balls to tees, to gloves, to hats, to shirts, to just your day-to-day operation of golf operations. And that's what we really need. To be successful about it's gonna be really easy. I've already done the basic math, we're only asking for twenty thousand dollars. Um, we have four leagues that's already been set up that have been ran for years past before I even got there. But if we average two hundred players in, in the, in a week, which is pretty simple to do between the four leagues and we charge five dollars and that money is basically set aside, it's, it's payment back, it's pro shop credit. It's not that we're giving them cash back, it's pro shop credit, so they're gonna have to buy the merchandise from us. So if you do four, if we do the two hundred people per week at twenty weeks and we charge them five dollars, there's your twenty thousand dollars back. That doesn't count the day-to-day people that walk in, that doesn't count your, your public play, that doesn't count the, the people that aren't in leagues. At Fairmont, we used to purchase about forty-five thousand dollars a year in merchandise. My average shells on the year were about ninety-eight thousand. We keystone everything, it's at fifty percent. So the twenty thousand dollars is, is a hit and miss, it's not gonna be a miss, it's gonna be a huge hit. The twenty thousand dollars will definitely come back, we're gonna have another twenty thousand dollars plus in profit. So we're not gonna be coming back next year to ask for another twenty thousand because we'll have that profit in next year's budget. So this is a one-time deal, I think it's gonna be absolutely great. We just need this really quick loan for the first, you know, four or five months and that's all we're asking and it's, we'll get it paid back, we'll have the money to, to do it next year. And like I said, what we're providing with the ability to give the merchandise to all of the golfers around and outside travelers. I mean, if you've got, we've got all these festivals, we've got outside travelers, we just put a little logo on there, says Highland View, Butte, Montana, it's advertisement for the Butte community. So, so all we're So, so all we're asking for is the $20,000, we'll get it back.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mr. Fisher? Commissioner Anderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, being Chairman of the Park and Recs Board, we've went through this with JP, he explained it all to us and, and there was a lot of rewards to it. And we studied it pretty hard at, at Park and Rec also. And, and then Mark was there last night at the Park and Rec Board. What I'd like to do is just have Mark just give just a, if, if it's okay to give just a little talk on how it's improved already, the golf course, it's tremendous.
I think that's.
You couldn't, Mark.
Okay, so to be a golf pro is, is like, and I explained at the Park and Recs last night, it's like being a head chef of a fine restaurant. You have a clientele, the clientele follows you. It's, it's no different if, if I owned, you know, we'll, we'll say the Derby Steakhouse. And you, you were a continued person or patron for years and years and years. You provide a service, you provide a skill, you provide a service that you become used to. Okay, I'm taking that now from Fairmont Hot Springs Resort for 13 years and I'm moving it over to Highland View Golf Course. And I'm getting a following, I'm getting a great following. And I'm not only getting a following, I'm getting a community-based following that everybody's excited that I am actually at Highland View Golf Course. We've not only seen an increase in memberships compared to now, from what it is, we're, we're a little bit over 300 to where it was last year, under 150. So the only thing that we, we can say is that my ability to be at Highland View Golf Course is, is showing the structure that we're moving it to the next step. I, I want to take Highland View to the next step. I wanted a, a destination course. There's between JP and myself and John Mokahi, we are all on the same page to take a better product for not only Butte Silver Bowl residents, but for surrounding communities and for outside communities, when they come to Butte, Montana, they're going to say, I loved Fairmont Golf Course. Or, excuse me, Highland View Golf Course. 13 years of Fairmont, sorry.
Okay.
But there is a lot of things we did, they, before my tenure that I got there, they did a remodel in the, in the actual clubhouse, they've worked with the, the board to get new lockers put in, they did a remodel. I mean, the positive attitude from what I've understood, and I've only been there for three weeks, but the attitude change from what it was last year to what it is this year is absolutely fantastic, 100% complete positive uptick. And I think not only is it helping with just us, but around the community. The community is now also understanding that people are talking positive about Highland View Golf Course. They're not talking negative about it like they were last year, they're actually talking positive. My biggest intentions right now is to get the juniors, to get the younger people, our clientele is our, our, our younger kids, our generation, my son, my six-year-old son. I want to get him in golfing. I want to get the six, seven, eight, nine-year-olds. I want to promote golf, they are our future. This is the future of Silver Bowl County's Highland View Golf Course. And if we've, if we strive not to give them the ability to golf, then all's we're doing is shutting ourselves out. We might as well turn it into a, a golf pasture, or just, we might as well raise cattle. But this is the point that I'm getting at, is right now, I have the ability with the help of JP, that we are going to get Highland View back to what it was 10, 12 years ago. We're going to have the future of Butte Silver Bowl County using our facility and enjoying it. And going home to mom and dad, we're getting them off the streets, they're not throwing graffiti on the, the walls, they're not breaking into houses, they're enjoying a sport, we're going to keep them in the ability where we can control them, and we're going to have fun, and we're going to get them involved in sports.
Very good. Commissioner Anderson and then Commissioner Shaw.
Not a question, but just a real quick comment. I was talking to one of my neighbors today and he, Billy, come here. And he's always complaining about something. Last year, every time I saw him, he had a complaint about the golf course. We just started the garbage, I got a lot of complaints about the garbage so far, but different matter. But I go, okay, it's golfer garbage, which is it? And he goes, neither. The golf course is wonderful, I love the new guy, he's doing a great job. So kudos to you. Like I said last year, nothing but bad, bad, bad. And to hear right off the bat, some really positive feedback and just how much simpler it is and how nice it is to have a pro out there and how much easier it is to be able to work out there and everything. So he was 100% behind this and thank you very much for your hard work so far in getting it turned around.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Especially so quickly.
Good feedback. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, welcome.
Thank you, Matt.
And I, I go back to JP's kind of a doom and gloom last year, it was like, oh my goodness, you know, looking at all the, the deficit and, you know, it's, it's a win-win situation, I think. We basically, you know, by attrition, we didn't have to pay for your wages and we are not going to raise the green fees, correct?
Correct.
All right, that's also a very good thing. I love the idea of the, both the seniors and the juniors all being able to take advantage. I like the big picture, you're not just a golf pro, you know, you've got a bigger, a more global look at the golf, the whole sport. What I wanted to do is I was going to ask Danette just to advise us as members of council about how the money would be extracted out of our budget, if it's where it's coming from, and just kind of take some of the fear of the unknown out of that. So, Danette, thanks.
Chief Executive Vincent, Commissioner Shaw, this money would be reserve funds, but like Mark indicated, it's more of a loan to float upfront. We could have probably easily went through the budget and tried to pick and find those monies throughout a bunch of different budgets and transferred it over and allocated, but we thought it was best to come to you so you understand that we are buying merchandise again and that how it's all going to play out and work and that those funds will come back, just like Mark described. So it's a loan on the reserve funds, but right now we have to dedicate a source, so we have to state reserve funds.
Great, perfect, thank you, thank you both.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, thank you, Mark, thank you JP. You know, last year was a little bit of a rough road on the golf course and we do meet bi-weekly, I don't know if it's a, just a group of us that meet bi-weekly or monthly there. And it just shows that when you get input from the people that are doing whatever they're doing, it helps and the golf course is on the right track. And it's an overwhelming amount of turnaround there and I appreciate what they're doing, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Purdue Dole.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you and welcome, Mark, and thank you JP, I was at the Park and Rec meeting last night. Could you mention also, just for everyone's benefit, the changes with the memberships for families and college students? I just remembered that from last night, thank you.
Commissioner Purdue Dole and Commissioners, we, we did change a little pricing structure with, with the golf course this last year with membership, not changing any prices for individuals or for couples, but prior to coming here last year, there was, there was not a family pass. And many, many of the golfers previously had asked about, you know, I've got a few kids and it's too expensive for me to have all of them golfing out there, including my wife and, and, and myself. So we, we created a family pass out there that's $500 for a couple and, and their children, and it doesn't matter how many children they would have. We also provided a college student price, which we put at the same price as a senior citizen of 195. They were previously getting charged full price, they have to show a college ID when they come out there. And then we also, if they have a college student within the family, the family price would be $550. And that's with showing the college price as well. And then we're going to also do rental cart, per seat charge, so maybe could pay a one-time fee for the, for the season at $200 and then they'll be able to have a rental cart for the season, they just come in and they get that. But it'll be per seat, it won't be that they, they pay $200 and then anybody gets to go out there with them. So if they bring a friend with them that does not pay the per seat charge, they would have to pay their seat charge for that day. So it's, it's added a lot of revenue and, and it's been a pretty good success so far.
Good. Looks like we're on the right track. So with that, just to synopsize here, we have a request for a public hearing to have a $20,000 loan from the reserve to the golf course fund. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there any proponents? Are there any proponents who would like to speak out there for this loan? Final call for proponents. Seeing none, I would make a call for opponents. Is there anyone that is opposed to making this $20,000 loan from the reserves to the golf course fund? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Communication number 16 dash 148, we have another public hearing. Matt Moore, Metro Operations Manager with the Butte Public Works Department requesting council authorization of a public hearing regarding a sanitary sewer treasure state endowment project environmental review and preliminary engineering report. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, Council Commissioners, this is not as exciting as golf. But I'll get it started up, I have a handout here for you.
Can make for some real green grass, though.
So TSEP is the Treasure State Endowment Program. Last year in 2014, we got a grant from the state legislature out of the TSEP program. The total project was $813,051. We split that cost with the grant program, they gave us $406,526. We matched the same out of our budget. This is a public hearing to discuss the preliminary engineering report and environmental assessment as required by our state law to do so. The preliminary engineering report was in my office and advertised in the paper for review. I really don't think anybody came to review it. It's really awesome work, but not very exciting again. Some points about this particular one, we'll have a resolution a little bit later, asking for authorization to have the chief sign an application to submit this, as well as recognizing that we're going to allocate up to $500,000 from the 2016, 2017 budget for work. So we haven't really come up with the cost yet, we're just dreaming up the work in the preliminary engineering report. If you look at the report in front of you, you'll see a nice map that has a couple different colors. What we have on here is CIPP or Cure-In-Place Pipe. It's really a great way to rehabilitate our sanitary sewer system. It's about 20% of the cost of digging it up and replacing it. It also extends the life about the same as, as replacing with regular pipe. Also in this map, you'll see a little section that has some comments about our lift station. We don't plan on replacing these lift stations yet, but we're, we're looking at it now and putting it in our preliminary engine report to contemplate that for in a few years. These lift stations are 1970s and, and so they're getting pretty old and they're, they're getting worked on, so we need to, we need to update those. I think I've covered most everything on that, but I have to. Okay, next page, you'll see, a lot of the work we're doing is as a result of backups and sanitary sewer backups are probably the least favorite thing, you don't know you've had a problem until you've had one. They're horrible, but up in the Hornet, Waukesha area, we've had one residence with six backups, bless them. So we're looking at rehabilitating and also adding some additional sanitary sewer in that area. Next page, we have some more, we're looking at Court Street. Court Street has a really unique configuration, we're not sure exactly what it does. There's no, there's no manhole on one side to get a camera in, there's no manhole on the other side to get the camera in. It's kind of some goofy little services, so we really need to do some exploring. So that's part of the preliminary engine report is to do some exploration of, of these sections and then come up with a good design to, to cure this area. We did have a residence backup there in 2009, it may have been in their service, it may have been in our main, we're not certain. So we're just using some of this data that we've had, claims, a lot of it are based on claims that we get from residents claiming MMIA. And then the next page, just a few more sanitary sewer backups in the country club area, Rampart, Fleezer. Some of these, it's just a poor pipe, lot of groundwater in the area, kind of beats up pipes. So again, we'll be doing some more surveys and we have a little FlowDAR device that measures flow rate and flow speed. And so we'll be putting that everywhere, trying to survey that. The last page is awesome, this is the great page. This is what one of our technician looks at every day, our camera, camera van operator. It's, it's hard unless you really know what you're looking at, except for that first top one, that one's obvious, there's something wrong there. This is what we look at, this is a lot of the data we use to, to examine our sewer system. And so just some ideas of what we do and why we do it. Some more specifics, went through all that. So in 2011, or sorry, 2012, 2013, we hired Water Environmental Technologies to, and more similarly to create a master plan. We have 176 miles of pipe and to replace those every 50 years, we'd, we'd need to do 18,600 linear feet a year. We're moving up beyond the 10,000 feet a year, we've been slowly moving up now. A lot of the, the cure-in-place pipe really helps us get those numbers up, but just imagine how old some of these pipes are, over 100 years old and their design life wasn't meant to be over 100 years old. So we're really shooting for those. We have what's called the six-month jet list, where we run around and jet the pipes, clean them, we foam them for root growth. So whatever's on the list, six-month jet list, we try to get first because that's, those are the ones that have the most chronic conditions that we have to come, come back to every six months. So we're, we're really picking those off, that's where most of these come from. And yeah, that's really what, what drives us is that master plan. Moving on to the environmental checklist, it's one of the parts of the public hearing we have here is to discuss whether or not an environmental assessment or environmental impact statement is required. And just right off the bat, we're actually categorically exempt from either, but we've, because it's a minor repair to existing facility and the pipeline are substantially unchanged, we're not really doing anything, we're just replacing it. Though we felt it was necessary to do an environmental assessment, that assessment has six questions that we've answered in here. And then we also contacted the DEQ, DNRC, US Fish Wildlife Service, Army Corps of Engineers, Historic Preservation Officer, Montana FWP and the EPA to give comment. And they all said, hey, it's not bugging us. And some of them said, hey, good job. No adverse findings were determined to be caused by the project. These have been available in my office since April 10th. And that's about it, that's our spiel for this PER. So if you have any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Mr. Moore?
Thank you.
Thank you. So seeing none, I will open the public hearing. This is to receive public comment on the sanitary sewer TSEP environmental review and preliminary engineering report. Are there any proponents who'd like to speak in favor of this? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Any opponents? Final call for either. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Moving into section two, the consent agenda, are there any amendments or segregations? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, I would like to segregate communication number 16, 16 dash 173.
Number 16, okay. Commissioner Palmer?
Chief Executive, I'd like to segregate A4, the Public Works Committee Meeting Report, Section 5, Communications. section five, communication 16-147.
Any others? Seeing none, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This time I move to approve section two, consent agenda, A1 through 5, with the exception of section 5 in the Public Works Committee Report. That's item 16-147. And also move to approve B1 through 19, with the exception of item 16, that's 16-173.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go with section A4, communication 16-147. Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I was not going to segregate this this evening. It was voted in the Public Works Committee Report or in the meeting to proceed with the striping, and I could go along with that. But there were so many comments this evening, I thought I would segregate it and just explain the reasoning behind the communication. You know, I think there are some safety concerns on that street, Main Street. It starts off as a wide street uptown area, but then when you go down below even Mercury Street, it starts to narrow down a little bit and some of the lanes get a little bit narrow. So I had asked to reconsider the, the configurations of it before it was restriped, hoping to save some money and promote some more safety. I wasn't, I had suggested to go to Shero's, but it wasn't necessarily the ultimate goal. I voted for the bike lanes in the original thing and I'm behind them 100%. I think, though, if, and I agree, we can go ahead with the restriping, give it some more time, but as you're riding your bikes up Main Street, ask yourself, is there really a need for a turn lane below, say Mercury? It could be, you could widen the lanes all the way down. There's not that many calls for turn lanes going down until you hit Front Street. And then you could widen out all of the lanes and be much safer all the way around. And then some of the other ones, maybe you could eliminate, you know, a couple of parking places on the upper part and move the bike lane and the wider streets, you know, the wider lanes over. I think there's some ways to reconfigure it, but I'm willing to let it go through the summer, see how it works out. But as you're riding your bikes, just look at the lanes and see, is there a need for all those turn lanes all the way down Main Street when there's nobody turning? There's, like the man said, you can turn into his building, but what good does it do? Just look at it and then at the end of the summer, we'll see if there's any improvements that can be made. And if the bike lanes work, all the better. Thank you. So at this time, I'll move that we concur with the recommendation and let Public Works Department proceed with the striping.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the question. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. And Dave, I was wondering if you wanted to put, I appreciate Tabitha's remark about giving it six months and having an opportunity to really give us a time to vet properly through the community. We are all about the greater good of the community and not, you know, everybody should be weighing in. So would you want to put, say, you know, by Labor Day, we can decide if we want to?
No, I'll just let it go. And if people think there's a need, maybe to look at it and see if there's some improvements that can be made and help everybody out, I'd just let it go with that.
I just want to keep that open-ended is what I was hoping to do, so.
Definitely have our Public Works Director come back or Mr. Samford come back and give us a report on the season. And we recognize Tabitha in the back, I saw you raise your hand.
Oh, I did just have a question because I have only lived here for five years, so I'm used to billings, but I do have a question about the lines and being approved to repaint. We just paid money to have the streets cleaned to repaint just a week or two ago, correct? And then it was sort of halted. But are the lines going to be painted better than what they were for this six-month period?
Tabitha, I think I'm just going to refer you to talk with either Mr. Schultz or Mr. Samford outside of the meeting, but appreciate the question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Foley?
Thank you. I just want to, this is only a technicality and it's not a big deal, but the actual recommendation in the Public Works Committee was to note and place on file. Mr. Schultz technically already has the ability to go ahead and continue to strike that. It was already approved. So that was the recommendation that was, was seconded as well, so.
Commissioner Palmer?
I concur with that. I was just reading what the recommendation was on the report, but if that's what the actual motion was, I'll note and place on file.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication B16, 16-173, Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, requesting council commissioners deny communication 16-126 from Dan Rogan Camp to purchase city-county property. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I have no objection to the denial of this, but Mr. Rogan Camp did contact me and there's an issue in that area there where there's a storm drain and many are using it to dump garbage in that area. Leaves into the storm drain, hot water heaters, all kinds of things. And he requested that he has no problem, we received the letter, and he has no problem with the denial of it, but he would like to see maybe some type of fencing or something put around the storm drain because it's not doing any good with the garbage just being dumped in that area. So that was just a suggestion that was given to me and I'm passing it on. So with that being passed on, I would recommend and place a motion to concur and place on file communication 16-173.
Okay. I see Matt Moore nodding his head that he'll take note of that.
I'll second that.
We have a second on that motion on the question. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I attended the land sales committee meeting and I totally concur with Jim. Mr. Rogan Camp, his main concern was that other people were dumping things and he was afraid that it was going to affect, you know, he's across the alley. So I also would recommend that we put some signs up that say Butte Silver Bowe Property. It's just open and accessible.
Well, I would, I would note for folks in attendance and those listening that it is illegal to dump anything down the storm drains. I know it's an old practice to put your used oil down the storm drain. I've even seen markings where people have poured paint down the storm drain. In fact, a neighbor of mine who is a PhD chemist, I caught him pouring paint down the storm drain about five years ago and had to do a little education there that those storm sewers go directly to our streams. They do not undergo any kind of treatment. So please do not dump anything down the storm drains but storm water.
Can I continue, Mike?
You can.
Thank you. And this is actually a storm water tract, so it's a, it's an actual piece of land. And of course, you know, it does funnel into the drains, but I think the main concern with Mr. Rogan Camp is that it was being used as a, you know, dumping ground. And I really would like to see some Butte Silver Bowe, you know, keep off signs type of thing in addition to the fencing. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second with numerous notes placed on file. Nothing further, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section three, notice the following ordinance and resolutions referred to judiciary. Section four, we have a couple of resolutions on final reading. Number one, Tracy, can you please read the title?
Council Resolution 16-15. A resolution amending the budget during the fiscal year after conducting a public hearing at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Council of Commissioners in accordance with section 7-6-4006 MCA, appropriating unanticipated revenue from the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation for wildfire deployment severity contract for the summer of 2015 and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place council resolution 16-15 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
12 aye, 0 nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Number two, can you please read the title?
Council Resolution 16-16. A resolution approving and accepting the donation of a certain parcel of real property from the Greenway Service District described as follows. A portion of the Spear and Bauer placer ME 1445, also referred to as tract K, referenced REM Book A, page 193, and a portion of the public right-of-way along Grizzly Trail of the unfilled plat of the Rocker Townsite on the Cleveland Lode, located in section 20, Township 3 North, Range 8 West, PMM, parcel number 79555, located in Butte, Silver Bow, Montana, for the purpose of consolidating property ownership, placing public roads in public ownership, and resolving personal property encroachments and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place council resolution number 16-16 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
12 aye, 0 nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Section five, suspension of the rules for final passage. Commissioner Shaw?
I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing council resolution 16-19 by waiving sup section seven of rule 36 of the Rules and Order of Business of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the Judiciary Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes for the suspension of the rules. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
12 aye, 0 nay.
Okay, rules suspended. Clerk, can you please read the title of the resolution?
Council Resolution Number 16-19. A resolution declaring the intention of the Council of Commissioners of the City and County of Butte, Silver Bow, Montana to authorize submission of a treasure state endowment program, TSEP, application and providing for the effective date herein.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
I move to place council resolution 16-19 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the question. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I was just going to ask Matt if he wants to explain, this is another piece to the TSEP project that he's working on.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Chief Executive, Council of Commissioners, this is the required government body saying, go ahead and submit this application. They really want us to do everything through resolution and have all of the Council of Commissioners recognize what we're doing. So it's full of clarity, open, everything. So this just says, the chief has the permission to fill in the application, and it says that we're going to recognize that when the time, time comes, I'm going to ear tag half of my, or $500,000, up to $500,000 of the Butte Silver Bowe Sewer Collections budget towards match. So we get 50/50, bang for a buck. It's a fantastic deal.
Very good. Okay, anything further on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
12 aye, 0 nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Is there any public comment on matters that were not on the agenda this evening?
Chief Executive and Council, I'm Michelle Ryan at 4021 Paxson, and I just want to comment about the, the, the looks of our courthouse steps. It is, it is, it's coming summer and we need to get those steps fixed. And is there something in the works? And I know you can't answer, but you know, that has been there and it needs to get fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. We have noticed that. We have a calendar of other meetings and events, so please take note. Is there any additions or changes to that list? Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.